This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. We will not be able to livestream tonight's meeting because of technical difficulties, but tonight's meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/ISD535 following completion of the meeting. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent McHell, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Clerk McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Barmid.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
We now offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Item 2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. A note to everyone, if we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we're going to take a 10-minute recess around that time. Item 3, Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A, in accordance with Minnesota statute, set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. The policy and procedure identify our privacy protections for students and staff and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on an individual. We welcome two speakers this evening. When your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to Board Members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. You'll be heard most clearly by the Board and the people in the room if you're seated and speak directly into the microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the screens in the room. And please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker this evening is Westland.
Science Fair when you were in elementary school? Can you raise your hands? Thank you, and I'm going to do a plug for it. It's this weekend, and if any of our students need to get some hours volunteering, there are some spots left.
Thank you.
I want to know if any of you are interested in cybersecurity. Okay, forget that. Just stick with your other specialty.
Well, having watched and mentored many students going through the Science Fair, it is wonderful to have you here and to hear the caliber of projects I was able to judge at the Science Fair, and to see the excitement and all the work that you represent from everyone who's in the Science Fair is wonderful. Josh, thank you for all of your work. I know what it takes to put on this event, and anyone who would like to help out next year, please keep it in mind when volunteers are asked for, because it's a really meaningful way to give back to the community. And ladies, good luck, and we hope to hear good things about your experiences in Dallas.
Director Barlow.
I wanted to ask the question of Cindy, if you don't mind. I noticed you were tutoring three boys. And oftentimes, when we see the reality that STEM, there seems to be a reversal, which is good. And ladies, I commend you and your effort and your diligence and your successes. But can you, Cindy, if you wouldn't mind, share with us the challenge of recruiting and developing future scientists, if you will?
Yeah, so it's always bound to get especially middle schoolers involved. A lot of them feel like the Science Fair is just something that is too broad for them or something that they're not smart enough to do, which I always have to tell them that we all start off somewhere, that it's very important for us to try. And a lot of the students that I worked with, the three boys, had a lot of big ideas on what they wanted to do, and I think it's so important that we have mentors who are able to take those big ideas and make them as manageable goals for our students, so that when they're finished with their project, they're able to walk away with something that they feel successful doing.
No, thank you. I appreciate that.
Director Garcia.
I just want to say thank you, not just to the students, but also the advisors, educators, the mentors, their support system. I said this on social media a couple of meetings ago, when we had other people who were coming here, I just feel like every time we do these recognitions, it's like I'm a chronically proud parent of 17,600-plus students. And so, thank you so much for all the work you do and how hard you work, not just for yourself, but for your community.
May I come up, Board Members? Let's give another round of applause.
And again, thank you. These were five of 120 students who participated in our Regional STEM Fair, and five of 68 that went to the State Science Fair. I had some worries about waking up at 5:00 AM and hopping on a coach bus with this crew, but I would do it again and again and again. So, thank you, and thank you, Board.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
And let us know how many instruments we have to play to have good memory.
Yes. Our next item is 4.02, Recognizations of National Assistant Principals Week and National School Librarian Day. On April 4th, we recognize National School Librarian Day. School librarians play a huge role in children's academic success by helping children find resources and creating an environment where students are motivated to learn. We appreciate all the work and organization they do to keep our students' learning environment the best possible. We thank you for sparking a lifelong love of reading by connecting our students to books that provide windows into the experiences of others, tools to be informed citizens, and the keys to unlock adventures far beyond their own world. On April 3rd through the 7th was Assistant Principals Week. Our dedicated Rochester Public Schools Assistant Principals work tirelessly to bolster teachers, motivate students, support their principal, create a positive learning community, and tackle the many unpredictable challenges that land on their desk. Thank you for all you do for our students and staff to make the school day run more smoothly. We encourage you to visit our Rochester Public Schools social media on Facebook and on Twitter to see some tributes, photos, and videos that we have honoring both our school librarians and our assistant principals. Item 4.03, Board Member Committee Updates. Board Member Updates from Committees or Any Information to Share, and I will let Superintendent McHell kick us off.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And Board Members, we know that in Rochester, we are fortunate to have a vibrant community focused on the STEM fields, otherwise known as science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And every year, we celebrate our students' accomplishments and development in those fields with a STEM Fair and competition, and the opportunity for young people to take a chance in venturing out into new learning. And we want to recognize some of those young people now. So, it's my honor to call Josh Halverson, who's our Youth and Enrichment Coordinator in our Community Education Department, up to the podium to tell us a bit about the STEM Fair and recognize some of the student accomplishments that we are so proud of.
Sure. Superintendent McHell, members of the Board, and Chair, Dr. and Teacher Jean Marvin, thank you for having us. I'm excited to introduce you to the STEM Fair, what we did this year, and some of our students. The Rochester Regional STEM Fair is an event where middle and high school students can show up, and they can present original science and engineering projects. This was the 65th year of the Rochester Regional STEM Fair, and our theme was "Give a Second Glance," which was a reminder about being critically thinking of technology. We had projects ranging from an underwater vehicle that swam around in the John Adams Middle School pool, to a project about taking different ingredients from cookies and swapping them out for maybe less allergenic ingredients. We had high school projects about diagnosing diseases with AI and about making diagnostic procedures faster and less expensive for patients. The best part of the STEM Fair is in the community involvement. I provided you with our program from the day, and you can see some of the sponsors. And I'm glad to actually be able to thank one of them here. We had a robust mentorship program this year because of a group called Ora Cooley. Ora Cooley is managed by alumni of Rochester Public Schools. It's managed by graduate students in town, and their entire goal is to find professional scientists and engineers who want to help our students. We had about 80 students who signed up for that program. Forty of them participated in the local science fair, and then about 20 moved on to the Minnesota State Science Fair. I want to thank Sydney Lundell, who's here today. Sydney, can you stand up? So, Sydney is one of our mentors, who is from the Mayo Grad School, and she was paired with students at John Adams Middle School. I believe three boys who are very excited about robots and all things electronics. And Sydney very patiently guided them through physical, I'm sorry, feasible projects. And we recognize Sydney as our 2023 Regional STEM Fair Mentor of the Year, but then also she won the Seagate Mentorship Award at the Minnesota State Science Fair, earning $1,000 for herself and a $1,000 donation to John Adams Middle School. So, on behalf of the Rochester Regional STEM Fair and Community Ed and RPS, I just wanted to recognize Sydney. Thank you. It's mentors like Sydney that can give potentially a more equitable experience to students. Not every student has somebody at home who is a scientist or an engineer, and by the involvement of community members, we're able to give those experiences to more students. And we've had volunteers as well from the community as judges, as volunteers at the Regional STEM Fair in the program. It thanks a few of our premier sponsors. Mayo Clinic donated $5,000 through their Community Contributions Program, and their people show up, their people show up to help our students at the STEM Fair. Same with people from IBM, Rochester Public Utilities, and then again, the Ora Cooley Organization. So, we're very glad to have them helping our students. Could I have the students who are present, who did the STEM Fair, come up? You can stand kind of like right here and just face the Board. I'll have you introduce yourselves. So, one thing that's unique about the STEM Fair is that students are doing original projects. They're coming up with their own ideas. They are planning. They're coming up with new solutions as they figure out their projects. So, I'm just going to ask each of you, the middle schoolers, just say your name, your school, and then kind of one thing about your project.
So, my name is Babir Yubayna, and I'm from Dakota Middle School. My project was Thirsty for the Truth, and I discovered that the water in Minnesota is free from contaminants.
My name is Julia.
My name is Yufa Jel.
We're from Kellogg, and our project is about the amount of instruments you play will affect your memory, and we want to figure out if there's any correlation between those.
And then, the next two students were our two finalists for the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair. So, Rochester has enough students who participate in our regional fair that we're able to directly send to students. So, during your mid-May School Board Meeting, you can think of them. They'll be in Dallas, Texas, representing Rochester Public Schools.
My name is Isha Kapoor. I'm a junior at Mayo High School. And just to give a quick summary, my project, my project centered around multiple myeloma, which is a cancer of the plasma cells in the bone marrow. So, currently on the market, there exists a drug known as Melphalan that is frequently used to treat myeloma, but over time, myeloma cells develop resistance to Melphalan by rewiring their cellular metabolism. So, my science fair project this year was a continuation of my project from last year in which we found that Melphalan-resistant cells are able to develop their resistance by breaking up their mitochondrial activity. In my project this year, our goal was to further determine differences in metabolism between Melphalan-resistant and sensitive cells. And ultimately, one finding of my research was that differences exist in the carbon flux within the mitochondria of Melphalan-resistant versus sensitive cells. We also found that when we inhibited the mitochondrial function of Melphalan-resistant cells, we were able to reinstate sensitivity to Melphalan, indicating to us that heightened mitochondrial function was a primary driver of Melphalan resistance in myeloma cells.
Hello, my name is Christine Song, and I'm a senior at Mayo High School, and my project was a project I've been working on for the past six to seven years after my mom was initially diagnosed with breast cancer. And I've been always wanting to find a cure for breast cancer, specifically for this year, I was trying to find a cure for one subtype called triple-negative, which is known to be the most aggressive form of breast cancer that there currently is. And I also kind of studied chemotherapy resistance in triple-negative breast cancer patients just because it's so prevalent among them, and that's like all me, that's like one of the only treatment options available. And I was able to suggest using the exosome inhibitors as a potential new targeted treatment for the triple-negative breast cancer patients.
Awesome. So, please join me in recognizing these students and the 120 students who have participated.
Before you sit down, I'd like to know, did any of you ever participate in the Gateway Science Fair when you were in elementary school? Can you raise your hands? Thank you, and I'm going to do a plug for it. It's this weekend, and if any of our students need to get some hours volunteering, there are some spots left.
Thank you.
I want to know if any of you are interested in cybersecurity. Okay, forget that. Just stick with your other specialty.
Well, having watched and mentored many students going through the Science Fair, it is wonderful to have you here and to hear the caliber of projects I was able to judge at the Science Fair, and to see the excitement and all the work that you represent from everyone who's in the Science Fair is wonderful. Josh, thank you for all of your work. I know what it takes to put on this event, and anyone who would like to help out next year, please keep it in mind when volunteers are asked for, because it's a really meaningful way to give back to the community. And ladies, good luck, and we hope to hear good things about your experiences in Dallas.
And...
Director Barlow.
I wanted to ask the question of Cindy, if you don't mind. I noticed you were tutoring three boys.
Yes.
And oftentimes, when we see the reality that STEM, there seems to be a reversal, which is good, and ladies, I commend you and your effort and your diligence and your successes. But can you, Cindy, if you wouldn't mind, share with us the challenge of recruiting and developing future scientists, if you will?
Yeah, so it's always bound to get especially middle schoolers involved. A lot of them feel like the Science Fair is just something that is too broad for them or something that they're not smart enough to do, which I always have to tell them that we all start off somewhere, that it's very important for us to try. And a lot of the students that I worked with, the three boys, had a lot of big ideas on what they wanted to do, and I think it's so important that we have mentors who are able to take those big ideas and make them as manageable goals for our students, so that when they're finished with their project, they're able to walk away with something that they feel successful doing. That was for the point.
No, thank you. I appreciate that.
Director Garcia.
I just want to say thank you, not just to the students, but also the advisors, educators, the mentors, their support system. I said this on social media a couple of meetings ago, when we had other people who were coming here, I just feel like every time we do these recognitions, it's like I'm a chronically proud parent of 17,600-plus students. And so, thank you so much for all the work you do and how hard you work, not just for yourself, but for your community.
May I come up, Board Members? Let's give another round of applause.
And again, thank you. These were five of 120 students who participated in our Regional STEM Fair, and five of 68 that went to the State Science Fair. I had some worries about waking up at 5:00 AM and hopping on a coach bus with this crew, but I would do it again and again and again. So, thank you, and thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
And let us know how many instruments we have to play to have good memory.
Yes. Our next item is 4.02, Recognizations of National Assistant Principals Week and National School Librarian Day. On April 4th, we recognize National School Librarian Day. School librarians play a huge role in children's academic success by helping children find resources and creating an environment where students are motivated to learn. We appreciate all the work and organization they do to keep our students' learning environment the best possible. We thank you for sparking a lifelong love of reading by connecting our students to books that provide windows into the experiences of others, tools to be informed citizens, and the keys to unlock adventures far beyond their own world. On April 3rd through the 7th was Assistant Principals Week. Our dedicated Rochester Public Schools Assistant Principals work tirelessly to bolster teachers, motivate students, support their principal, create a positive learning community, and tackle the many unpredictable challenges that land on their desk. Thank you for all you do for our students and staff to make the school day run more smoothly. We encourage you to visit our Rochester Public Schools social media on Facebook and on Twitter to see some tributes, photos, and videos that we have honoring both our school librarians and our assistant principals. Item 4.03, Board Member Committee Updates. Board Member Updates from Committees or Any Information to Share, and I will let Superintendent McHell kick us off.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I'll be very brief, but I want to just thank our Rochester Public Schools staff, students, community members, families, for their incredible flexibility as we continue to deal with a cyber event that remains ongoing and has caused us to close down our internet access and some systems. We are working diligently to address that, and in the meantime, our schools went old school today. I was in five schools, and we saw overheads that had long been left for the relic of history pulled out and engaged. Students were absolutely, in every school I was in, focused. Teachers were creative. Administrators were engaging kids in the halls, and we know that wasn't easy, and we are grateful for the patience and support of our community as we work through this challenge, which we will do. But in the meantime, we are going to continue to provide information, when we can provide information, and ask people to understand why we can only do that at certain times. So, with that, thank you again. I'm glad they kept those overheads at Willow Creek and elsewhere. I think somewhat against previous district directions, sometimes it's good to be creative in the face of short-sighted thinking, and so I'm glad those things were still around somewhere.
Director Murr.
Two things. One, when the superintendent said they went old school, he looked directly at me. I'm a little bit offended about that, but it's entirely appropriate also. I know a lot of teachers, and the thing is, this tech issue is a huge issue for families, certainly, for students, absolutely. But, you know, our teachers are not just technology. They know how to teach. It's who they are. It's what they do, and they are doing a tremendous job of doing what they were trained to do. So, it's frustrating for everyone, but I really appreciate the work that they continue to do and the creativity that they're bringing to the classroom. Second thing is, at the end of March, I was able to attend a regional speech tournament hosted at Mayo High School, and our Rochester Schools were involved and a number of other schools involved. These kids are brilliant, and just a warning, do not get into a debate with a Rochester speech student, because they will get ya every time. These kids were fabulous, absolutely fabulous.
Great. And the other? Director McLaughlin.
I want to give a short report from the Legislative Committee that we've been working over the last week or so to get a letter to our area legislators because of some bills that are coming up for vote fairly soon up in St. Paul. And some of the things that we talked about in our letter to them is that we fully support some bills that talk about authorizing the School Board to extend an operating referendum that would help us better plan and budget for our budgets. We also explained to them that there's some proposed language in some of the bills that detracts from the idea that we wanted to convey to them that it's really important to our district that we not have a one-size-fits-all approach to K-12 education, and that doing some things on the local level are best for our students. When we have changes in our district, where we need to implement changes at the building level, we don't want to be confined by the language in a particular statute that would prevent us from doing that. It's also important to recognize that we do need to balance our budget every year, and there were some potential new mandates in the statutes that are being proposed that we wanted to let them know the fiscal impact on the district of those new mandates that would not necessarily come with new funding. And we plan to follow up with some additional revenue information and are hoping that our legislators are open to our feedback, so that we can do what's best for our, not only our district, but our staff, our families, and our students.
Thank you. Director Workman.
Yeah, the Legislative Committee, which included Dr. McHell and Mr. Carlson, had the opportunity to speak with one legislator over the break last week, and we had a good conversation. We did another one by phone. So, we have been in contact with legislators who were available during their break, but I really want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. McHell and Mr. Carlson for their work on this, especially during a little bit of a problem this last week.
Yeah, the Legislative Committee, which included Dr. Pekel and Mr. Carlson, had the opportunity to speak with one legislator over the break last week. And we had a good conversation. We did another one by phone. So we have been in contact with legislators who were available during their break. But I really want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Pekel and Mr. Carlson for their work on this, especially during a little bit of a problem this last weekend, on a holiday weekend, to take the time to meet with us, help us fill in some of those numbers, and give us some feedback. So, thank you. That was very valuable.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I was... Oh, Director Garcia.
I just said I thirded that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, I will let Director Barlow speak if he would like, but he and I both attended the National School Board COSBA, Council of State School Board Association inaugural annual convention over break. And it was the first meeting of a group of 23 states that have formed this new organization. And it was two, three days of workshops and being able to meet school board members from both our state and from other states. And without giving you all the list of the highlights of workshops, once we have access to it again, I created a Google Drive for you all with all the workshop PowerPoints that I could so that you'll be able to just peruse at your leisure to see which... There were things on safety. There were things on curriculum. There were things on board governance and management. There were things on motivating your community and doing family engagement. So it covered all of the topics that we deal with here. So you might find a lot of those things as useful references to see what other districts and other states are doing.
And I'll just offer this one comment. I attended a session that the Superintendent of Miami Dade Schools presented a district of well over 100,000 students. And he had referenced one of our own, Dr. Peter Rucker, and the data that he is well-known for and how that assisted their district in turning their district around. And I thought, wow, how fortunate we are to have a person of national renown on our staff assisting us in developing our planning and ensuring that our students are well-prepared for the future. And by and large, I came back renewed, excited, and as the community slogan oftentimes goes, fired up and ready to go.[758.00][758.00][laughter]
Any other reports? And I think we would be missing an opportunity to thank you and the Cabinet, the administration, and our district staff for all the work that's been happening here since, over the weekend and this week, to help support our buildings and our building leadership. And we know the work is ongoing, so you continue to have our support. All right. Item 5.01 through 5.18 is our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed for separate consideration?
Full approval.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Item 6.01 is our DISC update from our family. Yes, you do. Yes, please.
I apologize, Madam Chair. We have evolved something of a practice of noting when we have a member of the Rochester Public Schools community leave us. And it's often awkward for me because I don't often know them, being fairly new, but I always wish that I had. Margaret Ann Hungerholt, who was a teacher at Century High School, passed away on the 30th of March at home, surrounded by her family. I've heard a lot about Maggie, but I, as I say, didn't know her, but I really wish I had. She was born in Minneapolis. She grew up in Albert Lee. She earned a degree in mathematics from Winona State. And then, she was no slacker, a composite engineering degree and a master's in education, also from Winona State. She taught high school in Baltimore, West St. Paul, Wabashaw Kellogg, Findlay, Ohio. And then we were privileged for the last two decades here in Rochester. She was most recently at Century High School where she taught math until health issues forced her to take a leave. She was married to Doug Hungerholt, and they have two daughters, Catherine Anne and Erin Rose, of whom she was very proud. Maggie battled a brain tumor with great courage and goodwill. She was able to take her daughters to Ireland last summer to see relatives there. I think it's fair to note that President Biden is over in Ireland visiting his ancestors. And apparently, I'm told Maggie was relentlessly proud of her Irish heritage and never missed an opportunity to talk about it. In the Post-Bulletin Jordan, she wrote a beautiful story, excuse me, that was about how Maggie, apparently on that bridge near Century High School, over the last several years, had this tradition of welcoming Century students by placing color, spray-painted cups in the fence. And it was messages like Century 2020 Panthers, Century 21, 2021 Panthers, Welcome Back Panthers. She even did a Panther mascot in the cups at one point. And when she was too ill to continue doing it, the staff did, I have to be honest, a solid impersonation of her artwork, but not quite what Maggie was able to do. I have to say, it was social studies teachers like me that were doing it, not a math teacher, so the geometry wasn't quite as good.[959.82][959.82][laughter] But really beautifully, the staff had that reminiscence for her there on the bridge. And so our thoughts are with Doug and Catherine Anne and Erin at this time of transition and loss and celebration of Maggie's life.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 6.01, our DISC update, the Family Engagement Framework. This is an information item, which is the next in our series of updates on our district-wide initiatives for systems change. Superintendent Pekel.
Thank you Chair Nathan. I am pleased to have Will Ruffin II, our Executive Director of Equity and Engagement, and Jennifer Spindler-Craig, who is our Coordinator of Family Engagement, here to tell you about this important work. As board members are well-aware, last year, this board set out a strategic plan that names 15 critical priorities for the future. This year, we are engaged in detailed planning for the implementation of 11 of those 15 priorities, one of which is our work on family engagement. And so this is like all of our updates on the district-wide initiatives for system change, or DISCs, an update on the work in progress. But I think it's one that board members will see has made a lot of progress since you approved the strategic plan in July, even though there is a lot of ground left to cover. So Will and Jennifer, thank you for your leadership. I am really excited about this opportunity to get the board connected and others connected to this exciting new work.
Thank you Chair Nathan, Superintendent Pekel, rest of the board members, and my colleagues in the Cabinet. We're grateful to be here this evening to give you an update on what we've been working on for the past few months. I should say, under the leadership of Jennifer Spindler-Craig, who's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting over the past few months. So, thank you. Do you want to say thank you before we begin to start? Ready?
Well, as always, Will is exceptionally gracious. And this has, of course, you'll see that I have a lot of enthusiasm for this topic. 55 slides of enthusiasm.
I noticed that.[1097.83][1097.83][laughter]
But that's set aside. It has really been a collaborative effort. So lots of teamwork with Will and with our DISC team and the Equity Department, as well as lots of parents and family input. So it is all of us. And I'd like to begin by asking you to think about a question that we've been asking many families since September. And that question is, what are your hopes and dreams for RPS students? And we ask that question especially because family engagement is really based on the premise that all families and educators share hopes and dreams for our students. And that when we partner and work together, we have much more ability to make significant impact in their learning and development.
So here are some of the things that we do know. We know that we have pockets of our schools who are really good at engaging their families and bringing families into their school buildings for different events. What we want to do is provide a common language for all of our schools and all of our buildings so that we can all get on the same page and share the same cohesive vision.
So let's take a little look at the charge that we were given back in September. And that is, as we look at our strategic plan, engaging parents and caregivers is at the heart of the strategic initiatives, which makes perfect sense to us when we think about the trust that our families are placing on us when they send their children to school. And specifically, when we think about the charge that we were given to recommend a family engagement framework, that was really to recommend a framework that would engage not just some, but all of our families.
So this slide here just shows you some of the members that were on the team. It was a good mixture of RPS staff. We had principals, assistant principals, coordinator of equity, equity specialist, our multilingual coordinator, bilingual coordinator, just a good mix of people all throughout the district.
And with this dream team of, for our DISC team, we researched a lot of key aspects of family engagement. And we'd like to start by just clarifying that this term "family" can sometimes be misleading when we're thinking about family engagement because when we're using this phrase "family" here, we're thinking about it in a very expansive way, a very inclusive way. So we know that, of course, family, it can be biological parents, but that can also include grandparents and older siblings and maybe non-related caregivers who are really invested in and support student well-being.
So I think with this one, we just want to show that our vision for family engagement is to go beyond the school events, beyond bringing families into our school. We really want to create a cohesive co-partnership with their students. So we want to think about being more intentional with our communication. How can we communicate better? How can we communicate more effectively to all of our parents and not just some of our parents?
So we've been thinking about, why is family engagement so important? And here's the why, right? We know families are the first and often the most consistent supporters of students. And students spend the majority of their time with their families. But hundreds of studies over decades support the idea that when families are equipped and able to engage with their students, learning, then children improve their grades, they attend school more regularly, they enroll in advanced classes, they're more likely to graduate and pursue post-secondary pathways, and they're more positive about school and learning with fewer discipline issues inside school and outside of school.
Just adding on to some of the things we found from research, one thing that really stood out to me was the last bullet point where it says, reduce teacher turnover and improve teacher job satisfaction. We know that when the schools and our families can partner together and do it well, the teacher's job becomes easier. This is why we think if we really nail family engagement, it's also going to improve our job satisfaction for our staff and our buildings.
Because research indicates that family engagement is one of the most powerful levers that we have for student success, we really felt like we needed to know the status of family engagement district-wide. And so we dove in and we wanted to seek both quantitative data and qualitative data through a survey of families, through talking points, data analytics, parent and community group discussions, as well as Title I family engagement data.
One such piece of that data was through a survey that we administered in January where we had over 2,200 respondents. So we were pretty impressed by that. You can see the breakdown of the families who responded. So 49% of the families were from elementary students, 20% from middle school, 27 from high school. And then you can see there's also that 2%. Those are from families whose children are in RPS Online, or our ALC programs, or any of our other programs that are not in our traditional settings.
And here are some of the things that we discovered. So when responding to this prompt, which might be a little hard for you to see, but I'll read that for you, 93% of parents agreed that people who work at their student's school are friendly to their family. We saw a similar positive response with 91% who indicated that school respects their family. A slight change here with 80% of parents who agree that they feel they belong at their student's school. 70% indicated that school shares ideas with their family to help their student learn. And a slight drop with 66% who indicated that their student's school asks their family for ideas.
We also noticed that 92% of the parents feel like their family is welcome at their child's school, which is really good. And when we dig into that data a little bit, there's a story that starts to unfold. 70% of our Native American families feel that way. 85% of our Black families feel that way, compared to 93% of our white families who feel welcome in their child's school. So clearly, we have a little work to do there.
So as we think about the takeaways from that survey, we recognize that there are a lot of strengths with significant respondents indicating that staff are friendly and show respect and welcome their families. And we also see some areas for improvement, particularly in that sense of really building that sense of belonging in a school community, as well as something that's really highly actionable, I think, that idea of sharing strategies with our families to help them help their students learn at home. Also, the idea of really truly seeking ideas from our families and input in an authentic way. And certainly, continuing to develop equity practices that are going to include and really help our non-dominant families know that they are welcome.
So you heard about talking points from other presentations this year, but we did want to note that through this platform, they offer 145 different languages for families to respond through. So we think if we can consider adopting full usage of this two-way communication between staff and families, that we can reach way more people.
So, yeah, so we, as you already know a little bit about Talking Points, as that family engagement platform, it involves the texting and two-way communication, multilingual. And this slide also indicates about how we might engage all families.
Yeah, so I think about my own kids. When I ask them, "How was school today?" And they always say, "It was fine, okay, whatever," right? But if we can increase the communication between the child's teacher and the parent, then when you ask that question, "Hey, how was school today?" "I heard you did well on that poetry," then it changes the dynamic of that conversation. "What? You talked to my teacher?" "Yeah, I talk to your teacher all the time. Now, how did you do on that poetry?" Let's talk about that. So this is just another way to increase the engagement between the parent and their child because the parent and the teacher are in more dialogue with each other.
Now with Talking Points data as of this morning indicated that so far over 760,000 messages have been exchanged in RPS since September 1st. And over 10% of those are in 47 languages other than English. The top languages are 4% in Spanish, 2% in Somali, 1% in Arabic.
That's pretty awesome. I think when you think about how we normally communicate with parents through our Skyward Messages system, the parents only receive that message in English. So just by changing the way we're messaging with parents, you can see over 760,000 messages have gone out. 47 different languages other than English. So we're starting to reach more people than we would have normally.
So here we can see the 48 languages that messages are currently being translated into an RPS listed in the order of frequency that they're utilized in the Talking Points platform. And we also have an example that shows how our schools and our families are just loving Talking Points. And this example is from Overland School where the entire staff has embraced the use of Talking Points. Mr. Grayler, a principal at Overland, can send announcements out to families in English. And of course, it appears in the families... And of course, it appears in the family's preferred language on their phone. And people are really understanding and responding to these. So this one was about a family lunch, and Will and I have both experienced these family lunches at Overland School. And people really respond and come out. The folders don't even really do it justice, because the cafeteria, the gymnasium are overflowing with families who are really engaged because of Talking Points. And then when they come to school, they're more engaged because of that sense of being embraced by the community.
We should have had a picture of the parking lot on here, because it was packed. I mean, it was, it took me a while to find a parking spot. But I think one of the beautiful pieces of this is if you look at the picture in the top right, this was like the secondary motive of getting families in. So yes, the primary motive was to bring families in to have lunch with their student. The secondary motive, if you see, Overland also partnered with Channel One to provide this mobile food shelf, so then families can come in and then take food home for the week. This is like, it doesn't happen. It doesn't happen like this before in Rochester. So Overland did a really good job with utilizing the tool, but also being more effective when they have the parents in the building. So we're not going to bring you back in a second time to shop for food. We're going to maximize your time while you're in the building. Enjoy the space with your child, have lunch, and by the way, take some food home, too.
So as we think about the strengths with Talking Points, we see all of those many strengths with multiple messages and multiple languages being utilized. And we are looking for ways to continue to grow that support and use of Talking Points throughout the district. Now, in addition to the quantitative data, we also wanted qualitative data, and so we sought out parent voices and stories. And so we had focus group discussions with a couple of parent groups, as well as four multilingual parent meetings, and numerous RPS community input sessions as well.
Throughout those focus groups, we heard from approximately 125 people representing different organizations throughout our community. You can see that on the screen.
So based on these perspectives, we identified five thematic areas that kept coming up, these areas of strength in RPS family engagement. So these five categories that you see there were kind of recurring themes of things that people kept saying to us repeatedly in a variety of ways. So these five categories are about relationships, really, valuing the relationships between staff and families, communication, family connections, especially at events. Families really appreciate those events, community partnerships and collaboration, and then the resources that they have access to at the school sites as well. And we really want to give a shout-out to all of the great family engagement going on across our district. We want to acknowledge and celebrate that there are a lot of strengths. We have a lot of staff members who are really working hard to engage our families, to build relationships with them, and families do really recognize that and are eager to participate in that, and they truly appreciate the efforts that our staff are making. And of course, because schools are all about continuous improvement, there are some areas for improvement as well. And you'll notice that these categories of improvement are actually the same as the strengths. And that is because the areas for improvement were also in those same themes, but just parents wanting something a little bit different, a little bit more, a little more nuanced. So when we think about relationships, it was really wanting more trusting, more equitable relationships, more effective communication, especially with translation, interpretation, and those kinds of things. Wanting family connections, you know, really wanting to better understand other families and their cultures, and to build relationships with them, as well as more community partnerships and collaboration, and really specific resources that they were interested in, especially during alternative hours.
And in that area of community, they really wanted a point person at each school that they can contact when they have a question about different events. This is a little easier at our community schools, because that site facilitator role is built in, but we have some work to do with our other buildings. Who would be that point of contact for some of those parents when they have questions?
Now, here's the plus three, because there were also three additional categories that came to light for us. And these additional categories for improvement include navigating systems, and that would be really families wanting to understand, well, what is special education, and how do I figure it out, and how do I use Skyward, and how do I properly get my student registered for high school classes, those kinds of things. And then transitions, and transitions really refers to the themes that we kept hearing about parents wanting some guidance with helping their students move from elementary to middle school, and middle school to high school, and high school to post-secondary. And then equity, really some families who are seeking more equitable access to school information and opportunities, and also culturally responsive practices. So that's a lot. Hopefully, you can see the enthusiasm that our team has, that RPS families have for family engagement. And with this data baseline, digging in a little bit throughout the last several months, our team then spent some time doing some research, having discussions, and we ultimately decided, after lots of good, passionate discussions, to recommend the framework of the dual-capacity building framework for family-school partnerships. This was developed by Dr. Karen Mapp and her team at Harvard. And the dual-capacity building framework, you'll see in this visual, this is difficult to read with that small print, but we still wanted to show you the visual, because it helps illustrate what this framework really can do. So when we see on the left, the challenge, the top portion is educators and the bottom portion is families, and there's that gap between them. So we know that's the challenge, the difficulty, where we maybe have that gap to bridge. And as we move toward the right, we want to build the appropriate conditions, put policy and program goals in place, to really build the capacity of both educators and families to support our students. So we're going to dig in a little bit and just look at a couple of those components up close.
When you think about the challenge on the educator or the school building side, the first thing that Karen Mapp found was educators aren't really trained on how to engage with families. You don't go to professional development on how to properly do this. So a lot of them are just winging it. So we're lucky that we have a few people in our district who are really good at it, but we need to make that systematically, systematically, well across the board. The other thing that we noticed, that families have a negative connotation of school. So we need to do our job to decrease that. We don't want our families to think of anything negative when they think of our schools. So we have work to do on the educator's side, and we also have work to do with our families. And that's why we thought that visual was so important, because we started off like this, but as you went across to the right, you see that gap getting smaller and smaller. And at the end, you see that partnership, and that's the goal, to increase that partnership between our buildings and our families.
So in order to address the challenges, we look at these essential conditions, and Dr. Mapp really emphasized that the most essential of the conditions to develop is that of trusting relationships, and that everything else rests on that idea of building relationships that are trusting and authentic.
So we mentioned this briefly, but we want to build the capacity of our educators and our families, so that we can develop this mindset, increase our skills, but then also give both parties the confidence in order to do this work effectively.
So ultimately, educators and families would both be empowered to have effective partnerships that would support students and improve schools. So in Rochester Public Schools, our DISC team has recommended utilizing the dual-capacity building framework to really empower both staff and families to have these effective partnerships. So as we think about that, we'd also like to take a look at what it would look like to implement this framework. Now, because the dual-capacity building framework, it's kind of described as being more of a compass than a blueprint. So it's more of a guide in the process. It's not a curriculum. It provides some room for us to personalize and decide how to do it. So it kind of gives us the what to do, and it allows us to decide, well, how we're going to do it in Rochester Public Schools. So we've thought quite a bit about that in our DISC group, and you can see we have the building capacity of district schools and educators. And we think that there's some great professional development that exists that's aligned with dual-capacity building that we could bring to our educators, as well as tools from the Minnesota model for family engagement. And to build the capacity of our families, we're really interested in utilizing curriculum from PK, the Parent Institute for Quality Education, which is also aligned with the dual-capacity building framework.
So that was the first part of our charge, was to figure out which framework we should model in Rochester Public Schools. The second part of our charge is to build this parent empowerment program, and that's what Jennifer just talked about with that PK program. So we actually went out and visited Minneapolis Parent Academy and saw it live and in person, and we came back and we said, "This is what we need to do." So this is what we're officially recommending.
So this PK, the Parent Institute for Quality Education, their mission statement is really to engage, empower, and transform families. And some of the highlights of PK are that it has 33 years of proven success, and its focus is really on empowering parents with a very culturally responsive curriculum. And it's a curriculum that can be modified and personalized for the school district and the state. So PK will make it personalized to fit our wishes. And it has curriculum at elementary, middle school, and high school. And one of the really unique features of it is that parents who complete the program are often encouraged to become future facilitators. So the idea is to have parents lead future groups. So our family engagement DISC group is really ready for next steps.
They're pretty quick. We talked about them, but finishing up the implementation plan, so that it's ready to go by June. We also want to work with PK to personalize the plan, so that it's ready for the Rochester families and our Rochester staff. And then lastly, implement a professional development plan for our staff and our families, so that we can be ready for the fall.
So we truly feel ready to turn our hopes and dreams for our students into actions to empower educators and our families to embrace this as a journey, as partners.
I want to steal a line that I heard Dr. Pecel say a long time ago, and it's, "We want Rochester to be the school of choice for many people, even in surrounding areas." So we really feel like if we can nail this thing, if we can really figure out how to partner with our staff and partner with our families, there's going to be no choice for people to come to Rochester Public School. There's no other choice. So we want people to say yes to RPS.
And thank you so much. We really appreciate your support of family engagement, and we welcome your comments and questions.
Thank you very much, board members. Director Marvin.
I like that, "Say yes to RPS." That was good. That was good. Let's make that poster right now.
T-shirts, for sure.
Thank you. This was wonderful and really informative. Question, and I think it's, you talked about one of the steps here is going to be educating parents with the PK thing. How, and I know the plan isn't in place yet, but how do you envision that happening? Because we have a lot of parents.
We have a lot of ideas. So for one, one thought was to have different cohorts of families by language that they speak. So we could have a cohort for English speakers, cohort for Somali speakers, cohort for Spanish speakers, so that everyone is getting that same information across the board. And then, like Jennifer mentioned, those parents who go through that training will then turn around and help other families. So it's almost like a each-one- teach-one.
Perfect.
We also have some, there are some thoughts that we have about maybe piloting some of these at our community schools and Title I schools initially, and kind of getting those rolling, and working with those as we decide how they might look in other settings. And one thing that's kind of nice about the curriculum, it exists as an eight-week curriculum, and it can also exist, like some components of it could work as standalone workshops in some settings as well. So I think there are a lot of options and some flexibility. We could be creative with it.
Director Marvin.
Say yes to RPS. I think that's a great slogan. Dr. Marvin, would you agree?
No. Yes.
Yes. There were a couple of things that really impressed me about your presentation, and I think one of them was meeting people where they are and removing the barriers, so that we're not requiring, you know, "Okay, you just have to come to us." I mean, I realize you have them coming into schools, but that's different. You know, "I'm sorry, there's a language barrier? Not my problem." So I think this is really, really exciting work, and I think you guys did a great job with the presentation. But one other comment I'd like to make, when you said that families may have had past negative experiences with school, and sometimes I think as adults, we forget that when we think about our K-12 education, we're looking at that experience through the eyes that we had at the time. So my memories of being in first grade are through first-grade eyes, not from the adult perspective of, I'm kind of an adult now, I guess, still practicing that. You know, and I think if we can get that through to parents, too, that, you know, try and step outside of yourselves a little bit when you think about your experiences with school, that that might help.
Director Bartle.
Well, I was excited when our new committee assignments came out, because that meant I had the opportunity to become a part of the Parent-Family Engagement Committee. Dr. Marvin often, monthly, would speak of what was going on, and I now see why, and I share that. An excellent presentation. It lets up against some things I believed and am that much more now excited about. The reference to parent cohorts are so important. What that does is establish or reinforce the necessity for diversity, if you will. At the basic level, it is acknowledging that 47 languages, I believe you referenced.
Forty-eight, including English.
Okay. Over 780,000, give or take one or two, messages have been sent. And to me, that speaks to the recognition and the valuing of the fact that there are linguistic, cultural, and real differences. Not that any of it is negative, but that all of it is what will make this district the district that everyone wants to be a part of. So thank you for sharing that out. I believe that dual-capacity framework is really the way to go. I was intrigued, to some degree. My kids were raised being told they are PK, but it meant preacher's kids versus a part of the Parent Institute for Quality Education, though my wife's in an excellent job in ensuring that they received quality education. But it is really exciting to hear this plan. And whatever we can do, you're looking at, I believe you had referenced 2324, rolling this out, our next academic school year. That is exciting. And if, as a board member, separate from being assigned to the committee, Parent-Family Engagement, what can we do? Are there opportunities for us to observe? I know there are many things that are going on at different times. You referenced a few of them, but is it possible to maybe allow other board members to be aware of something going on at a particular school, that if our schedules were to allow, we could perhaps go and support and be excited behind and sharing the passion you guys have? And so thanks again for a very good presentation.
Director Garcia.
I'm glad, Director Bartle, that you brought that up, because that was sort of
I'm glad, Director Barlow, that you brought that up, because that was sort of in line with my thinking, is do you have a charge? Maybe you don't write this second, but for us as the board to be also more family engaged beyond the fact that we have somebody on a committee, and maybe those are some of our own personal interests, because I don't think anybody at this table should be exempt from working on the things that you're identifying. And I really appreciate the fact that you don't shy away from the stuff we need to also work on. Because when I read this, of course, the thing that jumps off the page at me, and maybe it's because it's in red, is when I read items, like I feel like I belong in my student's school, like almost 7% of people said they strongly disagree. That hurts. And so I think, yes, that may seem like a very small percentage of people, but it's also a significant chunk of only the people that took the survey. And how do we engage those individuals? How do we engage the almost 10% of individuals that say, my students, they strongly disagree with the item that my student, student's school shares ideas with my family to help my student learn? So I appreciate the, like, really digging into this, and I think that we also, at this end of the, you know, part of the table or part of the room, have a responsibility to also participate in that. And it makes me think of, earlier today, I was saying that it's nice to be able to do all of these recognitions for students who are excelling in sports and academics, but what about the kids that don't ever come to our meetings? Like, how can we, maybe to Dr. or Director Workman's point, how can we go to those schools or to those students and cheerlead them too? Because whatever it is that they need from us, maybe they're not getting. So not every kid is going to play sports, not every kid is going to be an academic all-star, but that doesn't mean they're not deserving of recognition. And I think it's our responsibility to figure out how to recognize those students and those families and make sure that it happens, and meet them where they are. So if a board meeting to recognize students at Mighty Oaks, for example, or Pinewood, has to happen at a different location, I think we need to be ready and willing to do that. So I would like for you to consider how you might propose those things to us, because I think it would be an appropriate thing for us to look at.
Director Cook.
Well, thank you so much for the, for the work and for the presentation, for sharing out the information. I, I, I was listening very carefully, especially about the description of the PK capacity building framework, because I guess I could out myself as a very hyper-engaged parent.
No.
But my, my, like, probably failure of imagination, my conception of what it means to be an involved parent is basically volunteer activities and doing, giving of my time to facilitate programs at the school and create whatever it is, PTSA work. And then after that, I basically go to advocating on behalf of my kids, which is important, but it's kind of adversarial, you know, or at least it can be, and quickly goes there. And I, it could be, I don't know if it's a generational thing, I've heard it said to me, that this generation of parents is more likely to go to that adversarial place when they're advocating on behalf of their kids. I don't know if that's true or not, but I think that's, that's partly the challenge, is how to, when I, when I was noticing the, the percentage of families that had a negative experience in school, that's, that's where my mind went to. And, you know, whether that's a disciplinary issue or helping to make sure there's retakes available, or, you know, whatever it is, how to engage in a way that is grounded in partnership and in, you know, the, the interests of the student, which of course, there's plenty of shared interests there. And to bring this back around to a question, how, how would you characterize the differences between PTSA or traditional parent involvement and the PK capacity building framework that you're recommending and that we're looking forward to getting started?
You know, I'll try to take a stab at it. I think, for one, each family is different. So each family's structure will be different. So when a family looks at PTSA, it may draw them in or it may push them away. I think about my own mother. My own mother never went to a single parent teacher conference, ever. But she was super engaged and super involved in making sure I had what I needed to do to be successful in school. That was her way of engaging me and being a part of the school system, right? So I think that we have to be more creative in how we invite our families in. It could be the structure itself that's keeping the family out. The PTS thing that you're so involved in, that you like, might be the very thing that keeps a person from walking into our doors. So we have to offer more creative ways for our families to be involved. But I think it starts with the other question, I was also part of the survey, where it said, we don't seek their advice. It could be answered with a simple question, what would it take for you to be more involved in your child's school? And we could start there. And then from whatever they, however they respond, we start building it out. But if we never ask the question like you just did, we never get to a point to where we can find a resolution. But we have to ask that question of our families. What would it take? What could it look like? Let's partner together, and let's build it.
Director McLaughlin.
Kind of a follow-up to that. The one thing that really struck me in your discussion is that we do have some schools who are doing this well. Are we going to tap into that and how? And will that be part of the professional development, or is that another aspect of what you're planning on doing?
I think all of the above can be a part of the professional development. One of the things that we noticed were the, the schools who are using the talking points more were the schools who are having that higher attendance rate at some of their events and things like that. So I definitely think tapping into them only makes sense. How can we learn from them? But also, we should also notice that what works for one school's population may not work for another school's population. So we have to learn from them, but then also be flexible enough to adapt for another culture of, of students and families. So yes, we should learn from what's working well, and we should also adapt for the other people as well.
And I love that you brought that up, because we do have a lot of really successful things that are going on with outreach, with events. And in our family engagement meetings each month, we try to bring those forth, and there's been discussion about, you know, creating kind of a repository of these, you know, templates of these events, so that we have, we have these successful events that we can go back to and share with other sites. And we could do that in a variety of creative ways.
And I guess what I was thinking about is particularly the topic that Dr. Garcia was talking about, of, you know, how do we get the families to partner with the school to meet the needs of their kids? You know, what's going to help them help their kids and work on those things together? Do we feel like we have some schools or some plan for how to improve that aspect of, of what you plan to do?
I think that's going to come throughout the work, for sure. One, one thing that I would like to see come from this is we stop looking at events as a singular school event, and we start looking at them as a Rochester event. And I think we get more attendance, I think we get more participation, I think we get more ideas and being creative. So what's working for Riverside, let's say, let's make that a community event, and let's make it bigger. I think we're going to get there, right? The plan is not fully fleshed out, but as we start making these parent groups and starting getting information from all the parents, I believe some themes are going to start to flow to the top, and then those themes are going to be prioritized, and we'll start tackling them then.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll build on what Ms. Ruffin just said. Advocating for family engagement is what brought me to the school board. It's what I did before I came here. And I have never been so confident that we are going to get there, after seeing your work. You were right, it was the dream team that put this together, and it's been the dream team that's been doing really good, wonderful examples of family engagements in pockets in our district. But that systemic piece is the one that we've always talked about that we need, because it needs to happen everywhere for every family. I am thrilled about the PK curriculum, having done the workshops with the PTA, with Urban Family Engagement Network, and Families Power Student Success, and seeing that transformation of our parent participants to our parent facilitators. That is, that is going to be transformational as we empower them to be leaders for their communities and their schools. So I'm really, I mean, I think that's, that's going to be key. And I think it also gets to what Director Cook said about, we all start advocating for our own kids, but as we do this parent, this, this family engagement together in groups, we realize that we win by advocating for all kids. And that's why the structure that you've set up, the steps that you've set up, I, I concur with Dr. Garcia about use us, right? We, we, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think I heard everybody say tonight that they're pretty excited about this. So however we can help participate, be guinea pigs, I, this is, this is a reason there's a heart around, which we're going to steal, I think, the heart around that brick and the metal. And thank you, and we look forward to supporting everything that you're doing.
Just one.
Yes.
I think, Dr. Cook, a question, when you raise, how's this different? And let me just try and deduce this succinctly. It's parent-to-parent, and it's culturally responsive. And the cultures we most need to reach in this work are not yours or mine. This is about communities of color and indigenous communities. At its heart, that's why family engagement here is housed with equity and engagement. Those are the families who don't come to PTSAs for reason, with some exceptions, for reasons that are very much rooted in life experience. And so we need to meet those families where they are. And I, Truth in Advertising, brought PK to Minnesota in partnership with African-American leaders in Minneapolis Public Schools. It's a curriculum that was created by a Latino leader in California for new immigrants from Guatemala and Mexico to help them figure out America and education. And I said to the two women I was working with, who I've been great colleagues forever, they wanted to do this in North Minneapolis, mostly black part of North Minneapolis. And I said, you really want to bring a curriculum that was created for new people, new immigrants to the United States to explain American education, to work with African-American families in North Minneapolis, who've been here generations? And they said, yep, because nobody has ever created a culturally responsive way for them to access the systems that existed at the time in Minneapolis Public Schools. And then it spread to St. Paul and Brooklyn Center, and it was taught, I think, I'm so excited of what Will and Jennifer have been thinking about in a culturally responsive context. That's not to say that people who are white parents can't get on this bus. That's urgently important, too. But having this be parent-to-parent and in a very culturally responsive way, I think is what makes it most different than how a lot of us have thought about that. So I wanted to kind of just, I really appreciated your point to, like, put an edge on this, because I think sometimes we do need to say, you know, what, how it is going to be different from that work. And that would be my personal answer to it, along with all of the points about being systematic, being, resourcing it. A, a final point I want to say, the work that our legislative committee has done and the letter that they sent this week, this discussion illustrates why that is so important. Because I will be clear, that in my head, one of the things I have been planning to recommend to this board, that you invest some of the increased state funding that we are hopeful will come from this session in, is this work. Because we have to resource it if we're serious. If the other requirements at the legislature drive out our ability to actually make new investments, as good as some of those priorities may be, we can't do this work on the cheap. Like, we have to invest in this work. And I'm still very optimistic that those resources will be forthcoming from the state, but this is the kind of thing, we won't have the dollars to do in a systematic way if we don't have the dollars to do it in a systematic way. So I really want to thank the legislative committee for that. It's a powerful letter they sent to our local delegations, and I hope they listen, because it's this work that we want to preserve the capacity to move forward and nurture. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? We look forward to seeing you come back with more results in the future.
Thank you.
[applause]
Okay. So we're going to move on to our first action item, 7.01, Extension of Deadline for SRO Contract. This is an action item, so I'll read the resolution and ask for a motion and a second, and then we can open the floor for information and discussion. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the Memorandum of Understanding for the School Resource Officer Contract that extends the May 1 deadline for providing notification of termination of a contract to June 1 for this contract year.
Move of approval?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I think it's a couple of months ago, this board directed me to bring the board some information on alternatives to SROs and additional information on the work of school resource officers in Rochester. We've been hard at work at that. We have identified somebody who has extensive experience in this area, who is preparing a report and a presentation for the board that you will receive. Because we needed time to find those resources to really bring you some rich information, not only on alternatives to SROs, but additional perspective on how our students and administrators perceive SROs in our district, we've needed more time than the contract renewal would allow. And so as you did last year, I'm asking that you extend the deadline for action on this so that we would still have the opportunity to bring you that information, and then you could make whatever decisions you feel are appropriate going forward. But we would otherwise need to act before May 1, and it's not possible to get that analysis done for you by that time.
Director Garcia.
I imagine you've asked RPD if they're okay with the extension?
Yes.
I think it would be appropriate.
And further, are you relatively confident that this June 1 date will be adequate for the response you're waiting for?
Thank you, Director Barlow. I am confident we can bring you the information you've requested by June 1, and then what decision you all choose to make based upon that would, of course, be a subject of discussion. But yes, I believe we can give you the information that you've requested by June 1, for sure, in a, in a robust way.
And we currently have it draft scheduled for the May 2 meeting to receive the information.
So you'd get it May 2nd, and you have another meeting in which, at minimum, to continue looking at the data.
Director McLaughlin.
I just have kind of a technical question about the attachment that looks like it's the MOU that we would sign. Item number three under the now, therefore, I just want to make sure that this flows properly, that we have all the pieces in there, that it looks like number one talks about extending from May 1 to June 1. Parties agreed to the extension. I don't really understand the language of number three exactly, but then the idea is that it would be in effect through June 1 of 2023. Are we missing some words in number three, or I'm not sure what, how number three adds to?
I feel like three and four are just like one item, but maybe somebody hit enter.
I think, I think the lawyer and the psychologist are correctly identifying the problem and the solution. I actually think you're right. And I, I'm looking over at Jackie Peterson. Last year, we had this drafted, as you'll recall, we did this last year, and our attorney helped us with this language. I think we merged a bullet point, and I think you're correct, that 3.4 should flow into .3. So, except as modified by this SRU, MOU, the Party's SRO Services Agreement, which became effective July 1, 2022, this MOU will be in effect within the SRO Services Agreement through June 1, 2023.
Okay. Yeah, I think after 2022, it should be comma, this MOU, and somebody hit enter.
Yes. Does that Jackie sound likely? I don't mean to throw you under the bus there, but, you know.
No, I think we just took what you signed last year and changed the dates. So this is what we signed last year. It's updated.
Any other questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, would you move to amend that, to reflect that change then in the...
I will take, we can take that as a friendly amendment, yes. Is everybody good with that? All right? So if there's no further discussion, we have a resolution to approve this as amended. All in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye. Opposed. The resolution has been approved. So board members, ordinarily, at 7 o'clock, we would take a break, and we have one action item left on the agenda. Do we still want to take a 10-minute break before we move on?
No.
Do you want to move forward? Okay. So item 7.02, Approval Response of the APAC Letter of Nonconcurrents. This is an action item. I'll read the resolution, and we'll ask for a motion and a second, and then we can have information and discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of ISD 535 approve the letter in response to the AIPAC Letter of Non-Concurrents.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Superintendent Pecato?
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. First, I want to begin by recognizing members of AIPAC who are in the room. I see Valerie Gomerez. I know Lori Sam has been. Are there other members of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee who are here? We just want to recognize you because this is a response to your committee letter. Thank you for being here. Thank you very much for being here. As we know, by statute, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, every year, issues in our district and others, an opinion on the work that we are doing or not doing to support our Native American students. And so this work is ably led in our district by Amelia Cordell, who is here as our Native American liaison, and she is in the Office of Equity and Engagement, ably led by Will Ruffin II. And they wrote a, the, the committee this year wrote just frankly, a beautiful letter that had really rich conceptual discussion of what indigenous education really is and a wonderful resource that I've booked, that I've looked into a bit since then, that really, to me, symbolizes the kind of education we should want for all of our kids, but especially for our indigenous students. They also had some very specific recommendations in three categories. First is recruitment and retention of American Indian staff. The second was collaboration, communication, and professional development. And the third was student learning, cultural identity, and curriculum and instruction. You have before you a draft response that staff have prepared. I want to touch briefly on a few of the key points of that, but I don't want to read something you could read. If board members so choose, I'm sure that Amelia could join us for any more specific discussion of the work that she's leading. Will and others may want to do that as well. But let me give you a brief overview of the response that I would recommend the board consider issuing to our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. On the whole, there's complete conceptual agreement with what the committee is recommending, with some questions of capacity at this time in a few areas. In the area of recruitment and retention, there is complete agreement that we urgently need to increase the number of our staff who identify as indigenous. That is a major priority in our strategic plan. Next year, we will be doing the design work in that area. Amelia and I would hope AIPAC will have a critical role to play in designing that strategy to begin implementation in the 24, 25 school year. And in the meantime, we really appreciate the recommendations around being very engaged in hiring events that are focused on future and current Native American educators. We strongly agree that we need a more systematic approach to exit interviews. When we unfortunately have a Native American staff member who leaves us, I, this is, needs to be true, and actually, it's something that Carl Bakken has already begun putting in place, we need to have a, we need to have an exit interview that tells us the truth about why that person is making a decision not to continue with Rochester Public Schools. We think the idea of mentoring new staff has great merit. That is an area where there's question of capacity, but not disagreement on the value. We also, in the draft for your consideration, recommend potentially a Native American group within the Employees of Color Resource Group, which has certainly had Native American staff participating, but that that might be something that could be valuable. In the area of collaboration, communication, and professional development, this board has already agreed to have board members join AIPAC for its meetings on a rotating basis and report back to the board. The committee recommended, our new teachers all complete the Our Native Students course, and the committee recommended having other staff, all staff do that. That's something we're eager to look at. We, of course, wouldn't want people who did it as a new teacher necessarily to repeat the same course, but something that we're eager to look at making system-wide. The possibility of collaboration with tribal education departments is a really exciting enhancement to the work that we've been doing around professional development and curriculum. We agree that national conferences, especially the main national conference, are great opportunities. We'll continue to make sure that our Native American liaisons have funding to attend that, but we know in recent years, other staff have gone and have had a powerful experience, and so want to take a look at that. As we've just heard, we have a major new emphasis on family engagement in our strategy. Want to make sure that our indigenous students are served by that new strategy. One idea that came out of the discussion was, as you heard, we've had great success with the Talking Points app. Might there be some interest among our Native American families in actually a group, for their group, using Talking Points? In the area of student learning, cultural identity, and curriculum, we strongly agree that the classroom materials are critical, both what's on the walls of our classrooms and our buildings, and of course, what's in the books and on the desktops of what kids are learning. Looking at tribal flags, which is, which is something we've talked a bit about with Dakota and middle school, but looking more beyond that is an exciting possibility that I would recommend we ask our facility staff to look into, as well as signs in Dakota and Nishinabe. We have had fantastic participation on both the part of Amelia and Tucker Quiton, our other liaison, in participating in curriculum updates. That needs to continue, and we look forward to broadening that. The two big priority areas for the year ahead are English Language Arts and Social Studies. One of the areas where reluctantly, we don't have the capacity to commit, where I think it would be exciting to commit, is a major emphasis in either Dakota or Nishinabe languages. But I think as we are rethinking our world language strategy under Dr. Avamu's leadership, that's something that we should think about and consider. I will say, 20 years ago, I worked to bring Ojibwe to St. Paul Public Schools and to keep it funded there at the time, and it was something I'm very proud of at the time, and it was powerful for, of course, those students who took it, but also others who did. We want to make sure that our new post-secondary and career strategy, which we heard about recently, is very much engaging our Native American students so that they, when they walk across that stage at the end of high school, have got a positive, an exciting direction that they're well-prepared to undertake. And then finally, there was in the letter, a really innovative idea for an elder-in-residence idea that I think in our discussions, we thought could be really exciting, and we would need some help figuring out who that might be and how we might really make that an exciting role in our district. So those are some quick summary points of a draft response that you have before you. As you know, we are required, and I know this board is committed, to respond to the Letter of Non-Concurrents, because I should have probably began by saying our committee has not concurred that we are fully meeting the needs of our Native American students. I think we concur. I concur with that as well. You have to respond to that letter within 60 days. We are on a timeline now to do it. We do share that response with the state. And I would imagine that especially as board members are joining the meetings of AIPAC over the year ahead, many of these points can be continuing subjects of conversation, and it doesn't need to wait until a year from now when we revisit and sort of say, how did we do and where are things? So hopefully, that is a useful summary. And as I mentioned, we have Amelia and others here. If board members have more specific questions about some of the issues that are outlined in the letter.
Questions? Dr. Cook?
I, I had a, a single line edit, and it, because we don't have the same technology resources we normally would, I wasn't sure the best way to convey that. But the first paragraph on the second page, the title of Amelia Cordell in about the third line from the bottom is missing Indian, American Indian liaison.
Oh, thank you.
But I, I read the rest of it carefully, and I, I'm supportive of the letter.
Thank you.
Dr. Garcia?
I wanted to offer a comment to, I believe this is the third Letter of Non-Concurrents that I've read or response to, the Letter of Non-Concurrents and the response to the non-concurrents vote. And I appreciate the tone of this response, because in the past, it has felt blaming of AIPAC or like shirking responsibility that we need to take as the district. And so I felt like this was very thought out and responsive. Obviously, I'm disappointed in some of the things that we cannot offer, like the Dakota and the Anishinaabe language classes due to budget constraints and things like that. I do, this is just an overall comment, I suppose, to those on the board, I, I ask every year that this comes up, if we've ever had a Letter of Concurrents, and we have not. And the thing that I would like to urge my board members to consider, that instead of your immediate response to my question being, well, we will probably never get to concurrents because we're never going to be doing exactly everything that we could for our indigenous students, is to rethink that it's possible for us to get to concurrents at some point, recognizing that we would still need to do more after that letter is given, or that vote is given. So to me, it's, I don't take this letter of, or the response, or the vote of non-concurrents as, well, we did a really great in comparison to the previous year, the previous year, and maybe we'll never get a Letter of Concurrents, but it's because we always need to be continuing to work hard. I think we can get a Letter of Concurrents at some point and still recognize that there is more work left to be done. And I do appreciate the response since I started on the board, because I remember being mortified that kids were having to ask to wear eagle feathers and their regalia at graduation, like, what? Why? So I'm glad that we are making strides, and I am personally committed to attending more of the AIPAC meetings. We've been invited to a couple, and hearing directly from the members of this group and the committee about what we can do to support them moving forward. Thank you.
So I would also like to offer an amendment, looking at page 3 under Collaboration, Communication, and Professional Development. The second paragraph, in the area of professional development, RPS currently requires all new certified staff to complete Our Native Students class when they join the school district. I'd like to add a sentence there that says, the School Board commits to completing the Our Native Students class as well. I think it'll prepare us much better to participate at the AIPAC meetings, and if we have the same foundational knowledge that our staff has.
I think that's good.
Could it just be all new staff?
Sorry?
Could it just be all new staff? Or does that, maybe that's a bunch of sharing.
Well, it says all new, yeah. It says all new certified staff, so.
I mean, we're not certified, but I just mean, instead of taking out certified, it just means like anybody that's new that comes to us should be doing this, no?
It's not as direct to like a custodial.
I mean, custodians could do it, too. Like, why would we prevent them from doing it?
It's a lot about teaching. It's a good point, though. We can think about something for all staff.
But I think that including School Board in that, it's not new School Board, it's School Board, so that means all of us, regardless of how long we've been on, we commit, make the commitment to take the course as well.
And I think Dr. Garcia is talking about the certified staff. That news, that, the phrase is new certified staff, and your question is, is can certified be removed?
To include every person?
New staff.
So, yeah, I mean, like, yes, we can all agree, even though we're not, none of us are new maybe, to do it. And can everyone that is just new to our system do it regardless of whether they are newly certified or new staff to us?
And I heard you say something about what's in the curriculum.
Yeah, the content, certified staff is getting at people who are like teaching and providing the direct, you know, educational services. The content of the class might not be as relevant for some of our staff who play critical roles with kids, but who are maybe in nutrition services or maintenance. We also, as you may know, with our education support professionals, finding them time to do classes like this is a huge continuing challenge, which we're trying to greatly redesign next year, to actually add some new work for ESPs around equity. And so maybe I can commit to find ways to broaden professional develop, maybe broaden professional development for all staff. This class might not be the right exact one for all staff because of its content, but because it's about a lot of, a lot of teaching directly, but let's take a look at that.
The second sentence does say, the administration will examine the feasibility and value of having other staff complete the course as part of the district's ongoing professional development process. Does that cover it for you?
Sure.
We need to do all the things.
Yes.
Chair Nathan, does your new language contemplate it's not just this board, but future boards as well?
Well.
This is just for this year?
This is just for this year, so if we're all still the same, it would be this board.
I'm wondering if, though, we want to somehow wrap in, as part of our onboarding for new board members, that we include this as well?
That you include it in our student handbook as part of the initial checklist?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a great idea. And then that would, it becomes part of our practice.
Right.
So can you repeat, then, just the amendment that you're making to this?
After the first sentence, the School Board commits to completing the Our Native Students class. I didn't set a timeframe, but I was assuming it would be before the school year began, before we start. Because it's an online class that could be available to us at any time, correct?
Yep.
All right. Any other comments, questions, compliments, excitement?
Do we need a new motion to approve the letter as amended?
Sorry?
Because there were two.
Yeah, there were two. We can take them as friendly amendments. Take them as friendly amendments? I mean, it was your, it was your recommendation, so, yep. So as amended, all those in favor of approving the response letter, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, letter has been approved. Thank you very much. Okay. Item 8.01 is the annual board calendar draft. It's in board docs and has been updated April 4. Are there any items that a board member would like us to consider for future agenda? Hearing none. The board questions and responses relevant to tonight's meeting are available in item 9.01. 9.02 upcoming board meeting dates, we have a meeting on April 18 at 5:00 p.m. That is a study session. May 2 at 5:30 is a regular meeting, as is May 16 at 5:30. May 30 at 5 o'clock, we have a study session. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:16.